Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's April 13th, 2020, and this is your Clovis City Council meeting. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distancing guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing the following changes to participate in and public comments for council meetings until otherwise notified. City council chambers will not be open to the public. Any member of the council may participate from a remote location by telecast. The meeting will be webcast and accessed at the address shown. Written comments from the public are encouraged and may be submitted to the web address noted also up to three hours before the meeting. You will be prompted to provide the information below. Please submit a separate email for each item you are commenting on. Your items will be read into the record during the public comment portion. Please be aware that any public comments received that do not specify a particular agenda item will be read aloud during the general public comment portion of the agenda. If a written comment is received after 3:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, efforts will be made to read the comment into the record. However, staff cannot guarantee any comments received after 3:00 o'clock. Verbal comments. If you wish to speak to the council on an item by telephone, you may contact the city clerk at (559) 324-2060 no later than 3:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. You will be asked for some detailed information, which is on the board. You will be able to speak to the council for up to three minutes. Notice public hearings. For notice public hearings, all public comments must be received by the close of the public hearing period. All written comments received by the close of the public hearing period will be read aloud by staff members during the application agenda item, provided that such comments may be read within three minutes allotted to each speaker. Any portion of your comment extending past three minutes may not be read aloud due to the time restrictions, but it will be included in the record of proceedings. If a comment on the public hearing item is received after the close of the public hearing, such comment will be treated like a general public comment and made part of the record. I will call this meeting to order and ask council member Wayland to lead us in the flag salute, please.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and to our republic. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Bob. If the court can call roll, please.
Councilmember Ashbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Juanatua.
Here.
Councilmember Wayland.
Here.
Mayor Besseger.
Here.
Now we come to the public comment portion of the meeting. Mr. Clerk, do we have public comments?
No, sir. There was none received.
In regards to ordinances and resolutions, with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution and ordinance, and unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution ordinance be read in full, further reading of the resolution or ordinance shall be deemed waived by unanimous consent of the council. Consent calendar. These are items which are routine in nature and are placed on the consent calendar. They will all be considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless the council member requests individual consideration. The council member's vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Motions in favor of the adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For the adoption of ordinances, only those that have received unanimous vote upon introduction are considered consent items. Does any member of the council wish to have an item on the consent calendar poll? Mr. Clerk, does any member of the public wish to have any item on the consent calendar poll?
No, sir.
I will close the public portion of that and come back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as outlined on our agenda.
And I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the consent calendar, we have a motion by councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by councilmember Flores, to approve the consent calendar, and it is approved unanimously 5:0.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearings. A public hearing is an open consideration within a regular or special meeting of the city council for which special notice has been given and may be received. When a public hearing is continued, noticing of the adjourned items required as per government code 54955.1. Item 6, consider actions related to formation of the City of Clovis Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Dry Creek Preserve Sewer Facilities Services. Mr. Clerk, when do I read the...
Would you please read all four items into the record, and then you'll turn it over and follow your script from that point.
I will do that. Thank you. Item A, consider approval of a resolution of formation of Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Dry Creek Preserve Sewer Facilities and Services. Item B, consider approval of a resolution calling a special landowner election for Community Facilities District 2020-1 Dry Creek Preserve Sewer Facilities and Services. C, consider approval of a resolution of the City of Clovis declaring the results of a special landowner election and directing recording of the notice of special tax lien for the City of Clovis Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Dry Creek Preserve Sewer Facilities. And D, consider introduction of an ordinance authorizing the levy of special taxes solely within and relating to the Community Facilities District Number 2020 Dry Creek Preserve Sewer Facilities and Services. This is the time and place for the public hearing in this council's proceedings for the Community Facilities District 2020-1. The hearing is to hear public comments on the formation of the Community Facilities District and the levy of special taxes in the district boundaries. Before I formally open hearings, is there anyone who wishes to file a written protest? If so, they must be filed with the clerk. Mr. Clerk, were any protests...
Yes, sir.
This hearing is now open. We will first have a presentation by staff about the formation of the Community Facilities District. After that, we will receive comments and questions and any oral protests from interested persons. When all comments have been received, the hearing will be closed. Staff will make a presentation.
Good evening, council. Sean Smith from the Engineering Department. First, I'd like to draw your attention to two exhibits that are in front of you. They're labeled Page 58 and 61. They are to replace those that are in the packets that you received earlier this week. On March 9th, 2020, the council heard a request by the affected property owners to establish a community facilities district at the northwest corner of Fowler and Teague that includes the four parcels indicated by Attachment 1 and identified as the boundaries of CFD 2020-1. The original discussion that night was a request to include a much larger area, much of which has been called the Dry Creek Preserve. The final actions that night, however, reduced the boundary of CFD 2020-1 to only include the parcels being developed by Woodside Track Number 6154. Next slide, please. The recommended actions tonight are the legally required steps that will finalize the formation process by holding a public hearing and a property owner election. The recorded map is provided to you as Attachment 1, and I've highlighted the boundary of the four parcels that make up Track Number 6154. CFD 2020-1 will provide the city with funding to cover costs associated with the temporary sewer facilities that will be installed by Track Number 6154, which will eventually be replaced by the future installation of the permanent sewer facilities. If council approves all the items tonight, staff will then return April 20th for the second reading of the ordinance to authorize the collection of the CFD taxes. I am joined here tonight by James McCann from the City Attorney's Office. Also joining us is Ed Espinoza from Francisco and Associates. He's been listening to us by phone. This concludes my presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Are there any comments, questions, or protests from the audience on this item? Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Any questions from staff, excuse me, from council?
Yes.
Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, mayor. So on the revised resolution, Sean, it says that the number of acres are 43.04 acres and the number of votes are 44. Is...do you know if there are any duplicative people in that 44? Are they all individual and separate people?
As far as I know, they are all one entity.
Okay. So there are 44 votes that can all be voted by one entity. Do I have that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Any other members for...any other questions for staff?
Bob? Yes. Sean, can you kind of explain how different what is before us than what was before us last time? I'm assuming last time was the entire Dry Creek, and then that was just smaller. Can you clarify that again just for me?
Sure. The original discussion was about having this area that we call the future annexation area, and the reason that we expanded it to include a lot of the Dry Creek area, we thought this process would help future annexations for other parcels that wanted to connect to the sewer. During the discussions that night, we really toned it down. We decided to go away from that and instead just have the boundary being that the parcels being mapped by 6154. So what that means is the next project that might come before us that might want to annex into the CFD, they will appear before council again and follow this same process.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will close the hearing. Item 6A, we may now consider and adopt the resolution of formation of Community Facilities District 2020-1 Dry Creek Preserve Sewer Facilities and Services, which will form the district.
I'll make the motion that we approve the formation of Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Dry Creek Preserve Sewer Facilities and Services.
Second, do we have a public portion of this?
There was no public comment received. So a motion from councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by councilmember Flores, item Number 6A is approved 5:0.
I don't believe there was a vote.
There wasn't a vote yet. Sorry. All in favor say aye.
May I comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, Bob. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll be a no vote, and I think it's important for me to just clarify that. I was a no vote when we originally came up with the, I guess, consideration, I think is maybe how we titled it on the agenda of March 16th. I know that these are just my views, and I'm not trying to think they're from...say that everybody should believe like I do and perhaps have some disagreement with my position on this issue. But foundational to our development in the City of Clovis is that we believe that development should pay its own way, and traditionally what that has meant is that development fees are going to be paid by the developer. We often say that those development fees are passed on to the person who purchases the home, and while that may be true, it is certainly going to be true here, that the people who end up living in these homes that are being developed are going to be paying an additional property tax associated with this Community Facilities District. Also, I believe that to a certain degree, this flies in the face of our concept more broadly in this country, which is there should be no taxation without representation. Here, we have one person who will be voting all 44 votes, and yet that person is, in the long term, not going to be paying the property taxes associated with this because as soon as homes get built out there, that's going to run with those individual properties. And so while people will have an opportunity to acknowledge that they are part of a CFD that is in a stack of papers that they approve while they're going through their escrow documents. So I don't believe that this is, you know, similar to our LMDs, for example, because in our LMDs, the people who are choosing to vote in favor of the landscape maintenance districts are people who are actually going to be paying for that. Here, we're setting up a Community Facilities District that's going to end up being paid for by others in their property taxes. So, mayor, thank you for letting me have the floor for that time.
Thank you for your comments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have...Clerk, could you clarify the...
Yes. Clarify the motion. It was for councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by councilmember Flores. It was approved 4:1 with councilmember Wayland voting no, and I would just like to clarify for the record that we do have Matt Smith on the line should he wish to comment on any one of these items.
Item 6B, resolution calling for a special property owner election for Community Facilities District, which will call for the property owner vote to approve the special tax and appropriations limit for CFD 2020-1.
Staff comment on that, or would you like a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we call for the special landowner election for CFD Number 2021, the Dry Creek Preserve Sewer Facilities and Services.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I always feel like I need to clarify when we go through these CFDs. When I vote aye afterwards, the battle has already been lost on the initial vote, and so it certainly does make sense for me to be in favor of these additional three items calling for the special landowner election and the other resolutions.
Would you be abstention, Bob?
You can aye.
Okay. Just clarifying.
For calendar item 6B, a motion by councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by councilmember Flores, is approved 5:0.
Will the clerk please announce the results of the property owner vote?
Thank you, mayor. I'm in receipt of one ballot representing 44 votes, all in favor, indicating a unanimous passage.
Records show that the property owner votes are unanimous and in favor of the levy of special taxes and the establishment of the appropriations limit. We may now proceed with the final actions for the district.
I will make the resolution declaring the results of the special landowner election and directing the recording of the notice of the special tax lien for the City of Clovis, CFD, Community Facilities District Number 2020-1.
And I'll say...we have a motion and a second.
Can I make just a comment, maybe for folks that...it follows up on councilmember Wayland's question. Can you explain how one 43-acre parcel that's 44 votes gets voted by one person? That probably doesn't follow very well online, so maybe you could just explain how that works.
All of the parcels are currently owned by Woodside Homes. That's why it's just one property owner for the whole 44 acres.
So why doesn't it say 44 acres, one vote? Why doesn't it say that? Why does it say 43 acres and 43.4, whatever it is, and 40? How does that get calculated?
I'm going to ask my team, see if they can help me.
Probably a distinction worth noting before we vote on this.
Good evening. James McCann from the City Attorney's Office. The Melrose Act provides a voting mechanism, a landowner vote, where each acre is one vote. So if a landowner has 10 acres, they have 10 votes.
Thanks. Thank you. So my motion stands, and Mr. Flores, second. Thank you for that explanation.
Jose, did you second? I seconded the motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Clerk?
For agenda item Number 6C, we have a motion by councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by councilmember Flores, approved unanimously 5:0.
This is the portion of the meeting for public comments on this item. Do we have any comments?
No public comment received for this item.
The script says motion by council. We're done with that, correct, Mr. Clerk? There's still 6D.
I'll give you one, you're ready.
I'm sorry. Yes. The Community Facilities District has now been formed. Item 6D is now up for consideration.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the levy of the special taxes solely within and relating to the Community Facilities District Number 2020 of the Dry Creek Preserve Sewer Facilities and Services.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Mr. Clerk?
For agenda item 6D, we have a motion by councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by councilmember Flores. It's approved unanimously 5:0.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Administrative items or matters on the regular city council agenda other than public hearings. Item 7 is consider approvals of resolution, final tract map 6154 located at the northwest corner of Fowler and Teague Avenue. Mike Harrison is the presenter. Mike?
I'm actually going to sit in for Mike this time. So item 7 as well as item 8 would normally be consent calendar items. The reason that they're administrative tonight is because they were dependent on the formation of the CFD, so just procedurally they had to follow after. That's all I have to say on this unless you have any other questions of me.
Any questions for staff? Jose? Mr. Clerk? No questions for staff? Any members of the public?
There's no public comment on this item.
I will close public comment and come back to council for action.
I'll make a motion that we approve the final tract map 6154 located at the northwest corner of Fowler and Teague Avenue.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Mr. Clerk?
For agenda item Number 7, we have a motion by councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by councilmember Flores, approved 5:0 unanimously.
Item A, consider approval of resolution, annexation of proposed tract map 6154 located at the northwest corner of Fowler Avenue and Teague Avenue to the Landscape Maintenance District Number 1 of the City of Clovis, Woodside 06 NLP. Sean?
This item, again, would be a normally consent calendar item, just as item 7 was. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Any questions for staff? I have two lights on.
I'll make a motion when you're ready.
Okay. No questions for staff? Any members of the public? Mr. Clerk?
No public comment.
I will close public comment and come back to council for action.
I'll make a motion for the annexation of proposed tract 6154 located at the northwest corner of Fowler Avenue and T Avenue to the Landscape Maintenance District Number 1 of the City of Clovis.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Mr. Clerk?
For agenda item Number 8, we have a motion by councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by councilmember Flores, approved unanimously 5:0.
Council items. Item 9, consider approvals, resolution of the city council of the City of Clovis confirming the director of emergency services orders. Surfer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have six orders that have been issued that need approval by council. The first is Order 2020-08. That is an internal measure. It waives...we have caps on how much vacation our employees can accrue, and during this emergency, some of them are being ordered to work as essential employees and unable to take their vacation. So we are...this order waives the cap so that they continue to accrue a vacation since we won't let them take it right now. Item 2020-09 is an emergency order that waives transit fares during the emergency. This is for a couple of reasons. One, it minimizes interaction between our driver and the passengers, trying to avoid the spread. We do have some plastic shielding between our drivers and the passengers, but we want to minimize it as much as possible. And also, it's in recognition of these are trying times for our residents and that some of the most vulnerable are using our transit and rely upon transit, so this waives the fees during this time. Order 2020-04A is an amendment to Order 2020-04, and 2020-04 is the order that identified how our employee leave was being handled during this time, both prior to the April 1 federal COVID leave being available and afterwards. This amendment basically implements what council directed at the last workshop or the workshop preceding the issuance of this that allows some of our employees that we had been requiring to use their personal time, just a handful of employees prior to April 1, retroactively were giving them those leave balances back and providing admin leave for that time. Order 2020-10 was an order to close the picnic shelters, the play structures, and the exercise apparatus in the parks. Again, the parks and the trails remain open, but those features were closed largely because they tend to draw crowds, and it's difficult to maintain social distancing when they have multiple people in those features. Order 2020-11 is an order related to local enforcement of the governor's executive order. Any violation of the governor's executive order for social distancing or business closure is a misdemeanor punishable through the criminal justice process, but our police officers at times were running into some people that were uncooperative and recalcitrant, and I think knowing that the criminal justice process would be very time-consuming and lengthy, were not really complying with direction to close their business or whatever after repeated times. So we issued this order that allows the option of using our administrative citation process to enforce that order because it's quicker. This order also included a provision...our usual administrative citation process includes a multi-step warning process. You issue a written warning, you wait for a certain time to correct before you issue the next citation and such, and it's not really timely. So this order included a provision saying that that warning process was not necessary. Now, that doesn't mean by any stretch of the means that it's not being employed. It's just that if we have someone that is refusing to close their store or whatever, and after repeated attempts, we can just issue them a citation, and that was the intent of this. This one was...it got out in the media, not through our normal channels, and was misconstrued that we were going to be issuing citations without warning for any violations we saw. That is absolutely not the case. This is just a tool to use to gain compliance the way we usually get it. And the fact that we have never issued an administrative citation during this emergency, I think demonstrates the effectiveness of having that tool in the tool chest to prevent people from refusing to cooperate and to gain compliance. And then Order 2020-12 basically provides similar processes for all of our local emergency orders for enforcing those as well. They were included...that language was included, I think, in the order for price gouging, but it wasn't included in some of the others, so we added that so that we could use that as a potential enforcement option. But again, we have not had to exercise that because I think knowing it is there is helping us gain compliance. So those are the orders that have been issued, and I'm asking your approval of the resolution confirming them, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions for staff? For Luke?
Yeah. Luke, can you address any appeal provisions that are provided for when it comes to an administrative citation?
Yeah, we have a documented appeal process. We have appeal hearing officers that are not city employees. We have appeal hearing officers that are not city employees that. But it is all done through that process rather than through the courts. And then I would have to defer to the city attorney if after they've appealed, exhausted any administrative appeal processes. I'd have to refer to him and see if it's still available to seek to address through the courts.
Yes, after that, you can go to the court. But there is a due process hearing through an impartial hearing officer. It's not an employee of the city would hear the appeal. They have 15 days to file the appeal. It says all the instructions are on the back of the citation. There is a mechanism to contestify it.
So, the city council wouldn't have an opportunity then to address this issue directly through the appeals process. It would only be a political appeal that would be made by those who had been impacted by it. And they could address this during public comments.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Luke? Mr. Flores?
So, I noticed that we don't have to give a warning, but is there. What's the burden of proof? Like probable cause, reasonable suspicion? What? Is it just an anonymous phone call that someone has to give us as a complaint? What does an officer need to be there?
Well, it's not beyond a reasonable doubt. It's a criminal citation, but it's the standard civil burden of proof. So, we still have to be able to prove it. We have to be able to prove it in front of a hearing officer that it happened.
Preponderance?
Yes, preponderance. Yeah. Have to go back to law school days. But yes. So, we have to at least show more likely than not it's happened, basically.
And that's our burden. That would be the officer's burden. It won't be. It won't be probable cause or beyond reasonable doubt. It would be just the preponderance of the evidence that it occurred. Whereas the governor's order and the county's order, if violated. Those are misdemeanors. Those are criminal charges. Those require them to go to the district attorney's office, be prosecuted there, and that's beyond a reasonable doubt. So, the burden of proof for the officer is a lot of evidence that can prove that what the person, the offender was doing did happen and there's plenty of evidence.
Yes, you still need to be able to prove your case and gather evidence and have testimony, but it's a lot lesser standard than beyond a reasonable doubt, which would be in the criminal courts. And the city, if they're. The city would be prosecuting those, not the district attorney's office, or either or actually. But the city, if the city were going to prosecute them for a violation of the immunity code and the executive of the. Our city manager's orders, then in a criminal prosecution, it'd be beyond a reasonable doubt whether we did it or the district attorney did it. But if it's through the administrative citation, it's just the preponderance of the evidence, more likely than not, that it happened. But still have to prove up the case. It's still the city's burden to put that case forward.
And it's only a fine and can't be jailed. It's just up to $1,000?
It's just a flat $1,000. Under the normal process, it's the city manager's explaining. It's a warning. It's zero sites. It's 100, 500, 1,000. But we can't go through that process in this situation. So, they have the full discretion to issue up to $1,000. It's either warning or $1,000. So, we took out that legal room because it was just too complicated. And we needed that authority if something, if someone's really not listening and really not complying with the orders of the police department.
You go from zero to $1,000 in sixty seconds?
It's basically saying, we told you. We asked. We asked, "Would you please break up the gathering? If they don't, then it's a $1,000 fine." There's that option there.
Councilmember, one or two?
Luke, this one sort of had a backlash within the community on social media. And I think I'm sure some of the councilmembers received phone calls with regards to what they thought we were doing. And so, how did it? You said that it didn't get to the media through the proper channels. Yet, on TV, our officers were on TV interviewed, explaining this. And so, how did it get to where it was, I guess, misconstrued, misinterpreted to where we had to issue an explanation? Can you kind of go through that so that we don't go through that again and it doesn't put us in differing positions?
Sure. I'll give the rough overview. Chad is here. He can add any additional information. But generally, our officers were dealing with some media contacts on a separate but related issue. And this order got provided by an employee. And I'm not even going to say which employee or which department, but got provided to a media contact, just saying, you know, this is the kind of thing we could do if we didn't gain compliance, but we're confident we're going to gain compliance. And then that media contact, from my understanding, provided the document to somebody else that hadn't talked to us at all. And then that person wrote the story. And then the story got posted without talking to us about what the actual order meant and how it was being implemented. So, it. You know, normally, if we're going to release something, we would identify, look, if this just gives us authority to do such and such. The intent is this. We're not out, you know. So, we would give that kind of release. It got out there before that. So, we were behind the ball on Friday and kind of happened to play catch up to it. So, I'll turn it over to Chad and he can add any other.
It was unfortunate when communication breaks down like this. What was reported in the media wasn't necessarily incorrect. It was. There was no context and there was not policy behind it. You see Order 11 and Order 12, they're very similar. One was completed on Thursday night. The other one was finished on Friday morning. So, they were going to be distributed at the same time. Once number 11 came out, it made it out before we were able to put out the context behind these two stories. So, when that happened, we then moved quickly. Obviously, the mayor was on the news as well as some of our officers. But the information that was a little bit ahead of what the policy behind the directive that came out Friday morning, that's what caused the confusion. And it's really because those two orders were similar but different. And they were going to be sent out at the same time.
And what led to this? Was it because we, our officers were having issues and we needed this extra tool? And so, we. You know, were there. You know, was it such a?
That was. Yeah, it was generally that we were running. As this issue has drawn on, we have run into some entities that are growing a little reluctant and uncooperative and pushing back and refusing to comply with either closure orders or dispersal orders. And this was just to give them another tool that carried with it a little bit more immediacy if necessary. Again, it's. We're not out pulling people over. We're not walking up and handing people citations. This is a tool for them to use for those people that are refusing to cooperate, refusing to close a business that needs to be closed or refusing to disperse. And that was the intent behind these two orders.
Mayor, I just want to say, I liked what was prepared in the statement that you made. I think that that carried full intent of what we have always tried to advocate here or stand for on the council. And when the orders came out, I too was very. The way it was reported, without discussing it with you, Luke, I didn't even give you a call. But the way it was reported was one where it seemed. It sort of crossed the line for me when, you know. And the way, even as I read it here, I just don't like that type of language. No notice and opportunity to correct is required before issuing a citation. That. And then from that to what was stated by the mayor on behalf of the statement seems black and white, totally different. This order would require all 100 officers who are going out there, whoever it is, to abide by our intent versus by what the letter of this order allows them to. In other words, someone can actually issue a citation, not follow what we, you have shared, and they technically are abiding by the letter of this order. Is that? Is that correct? Can they? You know, because we say we're going to warn, we're going to talk to them, we're going to do all that prior. Technically, they can go see a business open and issue a citation. Not that they would, but someone could. And it would be a valid citation, is it not?
I think probably technically, I'll defer to the city attorney, David Wolfe, but I think it might be. I don't know that it would be upheld in that manner.
I think yes, that would be valid citation. Now, remember, the order says it's not required to give the notice, but that's the policy in practice is to give that notice. And it's really, this was legal language we had to put in there. We couldn't leave it in the legal room. And that's why it comes out the way it does. If we were drafting an ordinance and would say that, in emergency situations, we don't have to give notice. And so, to fix what we have in our administrative citation ordinance, we needed to draft that language. We needed to read that way. Otherwise, we don't have a flexibility. It's not clear. It's ambiguous. So, obviously, how it's enforced, you should be given notice and appropriate. But there could be times where the officers are out there. This is what I imagine. And they're saying, disperse, disperse. Nobody disperses. Now, what do you do? So, it gives them that authority. And we needed to have that language. It needs to be written exactly that way, basically for enforcement purposes. That's why we wrote it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you. Yeah, it's going to be the orders. The language in the orders is going to determine, I think, somehow either our entity or any other entity interprets what, you know, should be done when somebody is brought before the board or in front of the administrative professionals. So, the. It's funny how there's been different takes on this. Certainly, the media's take that, you know, now you can get a $1,000, you know, fine for, you know, not complying with the stay at home orders that are in place. I mean, that's been in place since the governor issued his order. And not only was it a $1,000 fine, but it was up to six months in jail. And so, I thought that that government code section, which is cited in the government's, within governor's order, government code section 8665, really, I think, was potentially very heavy-handed. And so, when I heard that we were actually modifying this to an administrative citation, I was thinking, oh, okay, that's going to be a gentler hand. That's going to be. You know, it's not going to be a misdemeanor. That's going to be on your record. There's going to be no potential for going to jail as a result of violating our orders. In fact, we are taking control away from the state and bringing it to our local government. And I think we all believe that, you know, local government is the one that should be making these types of decisions over some of the broader entities. So, my view was that, you know, we are taking a lighter hand than the governor. And it would be more consistent, I think, with our approach to how we treat our citizens in the City of Clovis. I thought that until I heard Luke's explanation today. And no offense, Luke, but what I heard you say is that this is actually going to be easier for us and it's going to be quicker for us. And that concerns me because if our objective by coming out with this order is to figure out a way to make it easy for us and quicker for us to rein our citizens in, then that's not something that I'm particularly fond of. And I. So, it's a difficult vote for me because if it is designed for us to take a lighter hand, great, I'm all for it. If it's to be more heavy-handed, and it sounds like that's been the interpretation that has been presented to this council, then I'm not for it. But then if I vote against approving this, then what I'm stuck with is that the citizens only have the opportunity to have jail time and a $1,000 fine as opposed to having local government play some type of role in, you know, how these orders will be interpreted instead of the courts. I'm also concerned that it's just by a preponderance of the evidence through an administrative procedure as opposed to in a court of law where it's going to be proof beyond a reasonable doubt because it is a misdemeanor offense. It's a criminal sanction. So, I'm really mixed on this one. So, I also believe that we are sending mixed messages because the orders say one thing, but our press release, and I'll read it here because I think it's important to put in the record. Our press has been, residents will not be stopped and questioned by law enforcement during the course of their day, either while driving or walking. Residents will not be stopped, warned or fined while running errands, going to or from work, or for walking on sidewalks, trails or parks. All of that, I'm sure, is true. But when we start taking an approach that is more heavy-handed, then I think that our, you know, our words start to crumble and we lose trust. And in an environment where we have so many people who are quite concerned and panicked on both sides of this virus itself and then governments that are being a little heavy-handed, that is problematic. And I think for us, I think that we need to be very transparent. We need to be very open. I'm all in favor of this order if it is an approach for us to be lighter-handed than the governor. But if it's to be heavier-handed than the governor, I'm not interested in participating in that at all. Those are my views.
Councilmember Ashbeck?
So, Mr. Whalen, or I guess, I don't know. Too many lawyers up here. Just kidding. The governor's order is a misdemeanor. As a non-lawyer, non-law enforcement, I would rather have an administrative fine than a misdemeanor. So, I find this an option for officers. I think the other thing that, as again, a non-law enforcement regular person, not that you're not regular, but you know what I'm saying. To me, it's the culture of Clovis PD. Clovis PD is not going to give you a ticket or a citation because they feel like it. They're just not. That is not the way we operate. So, I would just respectfully disagree that it's more heavy-handed. I think it's an option for officers. There are only other options to give you a misdemeanor citation, which seems scarier to me in that world. So, I think the context is in the City of Clovis's culture and practice. We are only going to use this as a last resort after we've tried to talk you out of, here's an option, be back tomorrow, whatever they. I mean, if they think it's egregious enough. So, I think it seems more moderate than a misdemeanor. I did not hear anything to the contrary. So, I didn't hear what he said. He just said, another tool to in our officers to allow them if they're not going to get compliance. And I would respect when this is all done. If we order a handful of these, I would be surprised. So, I guess I didn't hear anything that was contrary to that, so.
Let me clarify then, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
So, Luke, what I heard you say, and forgive me if I've mischaracterized what you've said. But what I heard you say is that the reason that we're having this administrative citation is because, one, it's quicker and we wanted, therefore, quicker compliance to these orders. And then what I also heard is that it's easier. And so, therefore, it would be easier for us as a city to enforce these provisions. And that was why. That was the motive behind us adopting these orders. And if that's the motive, then I think that we are being heavy-handed. And so, I'll give you an opportunity to maybe.
I may have used the wrong terms and I may have said that. I'm not going to argue with that. It's basically a local process to use. Again, our officer could go up and issue a misdemeanor citation without any warning, without anything. The, this is just another option that. They still have that. This doesn't require them to issue this instead. They could only issue one or the other. There's not a dual risk there. They couldn't do both. This allows a local hearing and it's not dependent on the court schedule with the courts being closed right now. And when I said quicker and easier, I wasn't meaning that we can. Quicker and easier to take enforcement action on someone. It's just a different tool. And again, it carries no higher fine than the potential fine under the misdemeanor. It does not carry any kind of jail sentence or arrest that the misdemeanor does, so.
That's all.
Councilmember Flores?
The only issue I have with the language is that it's a penalty of $1,000 per violation. If it said up to $1,000, I'd feel a lot better because the $1,000. Then we're going to have to settle at the hearing versus. I guess, well, even if it said up to $1,000, it'd be settled at the hearing, right?
Well, I think the concern with up to is you give too much discretion to the officers. So, you'd have to put a number. I don't think it's good to have, well, I'm going to pick a number up to $1,000, so.
But it's a good message to our citizens in there that we're not being heavy-handed because the language of the law, the government code that the governor uses in his orders says up to $1,000. A misdemeanor is up to $1,000. It's never $1,000. It's up to $1,000 and up to six months in jail. It's never six months in jail and/or. It says and/or. That's what misdemeanors are. So.
Well, I guess, you're right. The hearing officer could lower that fine, of course.
Right.
At that point, but we couldn't give that discretion in the field, but the hearing officer always has an opportunity to lower that fine.
So, your recommendation is to keep the $1,000 as is? And then the hearing officer would have the discretion?
Yes, you can lower it, but you have to put a number in there. You could say the first.
You could say the first time, but there really isn't going to be multiple offenses here. So that's why.
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully. But yes, the hearing officer has the full authority, and we have the authority to recommend a lower fine to the hearing officer, too.
Here in America, we're very lucky. I go to YouTube and see what's happening in Latin America. There's people not abiding, and they're, they, there's revolution going on in many places because they're not staying home. They're not voluntarily or otherwise. And it is getting very heavy-handed there because the citizens are not complying with the stay at home orders. And it's getting heavy-handed. So I don't think that ever happened here in Clovis. I agree with Councilmember Ashbeck that our officers have been, have a history of being very professional and would not abuse this. And they could always go for the misdemeanor if they had to, if they wanted to. So this is another tool. This is, we still have the misdemeanor. If you disobey some of the orders that the county has promulgated, those are two misdemeanors. And it has that same language, up to a thousand dollars or and/or six months in jail. So this is, this is a lighter penalty because it is not criminal. It's administrative. It's civil. And so we are being less draconian than the governor or the county, in my opinion.
Thank you, Jose. Any other questions before I, Councilmember Wanda Tua?
Let me just follow back on Councilmember Waylon's question with regards to easier. David, I also thought I heard you say, if we didn't have this, they would first go for a warning, that they would do this, they would issue two hundred and fifty, they would come back. Is that in our municipal code? It's on, you said, so instead of doing all that, we just issue this one thousand dollar. And so that's where the quicker kind of came from.
Well, the current process for administrative citations is warnings, a hundred, five hundred, and a thousand. Now, there is an exception in there for emergency situations, but I didn't want to leave, I didn't think it was appropriate to leave an ambiguity in there. What's an emergency situation and, you know, is this qualify, is that? So we thought just to make it clear, please form an extra tool that's less draconian than misdemeanor, I would think. If I have known the system and we prosecute misdemeanor violations of the municipal code all the time, much better to get the fine and go to a hearing officer. It's a much easier process for them. It's much less informal, and they can argue over the fine. Where's that going to go down? Arraignment in criminal court is not fun, as Councilmember Waylon can tell you. So it is, and there is a clearly a due process hearing. They will get to contest it. There's a process there. The municipal code right now for administrative cites is warning, ten days' warning, okay, unless it's some emergency situation, then it's a hundred, five hundred, and a thousand. So we don't want to have to figure out, well, what's an emergency situation? Does this count as that? And how are we going to define all that? And then we want to go through all those steps? That's not going to work. Police partners, it's third to the point where they have to issue a citation, going through four steps to get to a thousand. That's just not going to work. So we wanted to give them the option to have that authority to say, hey, we tried. This is emergency. The director of emergency services has declared it an emergency. Therefore, now you can have a thousand dollar fine. But you still get a due process hearing. It's not, oh, that's it. I'm done. You still can protest that fine, say, well, no, I wasn't violating the order, or it's too much. And they'll have all that option to do that in front of the hearing officer.
Why didn't we adopt that administrative process a little bit only and make it the order instead of doing it this way? Because you said that we already have an administrative citation process in place, which is warnings, wait ten days, a hundred, then five hundred, then a thousand. So in other words, to make it where the media can kind of go, oh, we're just adopting our administrative, or amended for this time to say, we're going from a warning to five hundred to a thousand if we want to make it where up to. So that way, couldn't we do that? Because now this language that's here, I read it as just no warning, not practical, but just, I'm just saying, not in practice, but in the language of what we have, it's just no warning, one thousand. And so we already have language that shows we can be like that already. So that, you know, we can always fall back, hey, it used to be this way, but because it's an emergency situation, we could just do a warning, five hundred, a thousand. And so that's the other part. I'm also on the side of Councilmember Waylon, where I, it's hard for me to accept this because I thought the citizens were doing a good job. They were listening. They were working with Sean, with Andy, and our police department. When we get stuff like this, it makes us look, you know, like the places we ran away from, the countries we ran away from. And so it makes it very, you know, it's not what we are. And so I, that's why, however you were able to explain it, Mayor, that's what I understood Clovis to be. And so how do we get there without having this language out there? And I think I trust all our officers, but it just takes one guy or one lady to make it all fall apart. And we can't discipline them because here's the letter of the law that that supports it. So that's my struggle right now. And so please help me.
Well, and I certainly understand council's concerns. This was, you know, not taken lightly by us. The concern with keeping our current administrative citation process is the timelines. So we could literally come across a gathering of a hundred people packed into a picnic shelter and, okay, here's your warning. If you're here in ten days, we'll come back with a hundred dollars. That's, and that was why the language was put in there to say that the, you know, that the warning was not necessary. Again, they could issue a misdemeanor citation at the same time or instead of an administrative citation, but again, this is, this has not been used yet. I understand council's concern. And, you know, if we don't want to confirm this one, that's okay. We can just go back to the misdemeanor citations.
And just last comment. I think really the intent here is maximum flexibility. Give the officers in the field that discretion to do what they need to do and not have to issue the misdemeanor and not have to arrest anybody. That's the worst thing I think they want to do is arrest somebody who's uncooperative and take them down to jail. Obviously, there's no room for them, but they have that ability if they need to. But this, hopefully, this is going to work and give them that flexibility. And hopefully, they'll never have to use it, I think, is the purpose here. But really, it's maximum flexibility for the officers in the field to be able to do their job. And that's kind of the way we were looking at it. Remove any ambiguity. Remove ambiguities that the administrative citation process in the code might allow out there, avoid all the timelines, and just give maximum flexibility so they can do their job. And that's really the intent behind it.
Using the administrative process doesn't criminalize behavior which hopefully, in three weeks, God willing, will not be criminal behavior. And I've used this, the administrative site process. It's cumbersome for a reason. We want to get compliance. So in this situation, let's say we have a business. Let's say it's a vape shop. And we go through the administrative citation process. David, how long would that take? Probably forty-five days to go through the process?
Our normal process, it takes at least that long. Just because normally, to PD, and this is how they do it, they'll give lots of warnings. And they're going to, I'm sure they're going to do that here unless there's a need not to. Several warnings, and then they get the site, and then, so there's a lot of follow-up, and it's usually at least thirty days, it's probably more like forty-five, like you're saying.
It's labor-intensive. Takes a lot of staff time. And this person who is, for all intents and purposes, thumbing their nose at us, gets to do it, gets to continue to make money and do what they want, and just wait out the process. And then when they get to the first one, determining whether or not, hey, can I afford a hundred dollars? Can I afford a thousand dollars? If I'm making enough money, I'll just deal with it that way. I understand the, I understand the concern because we don't want to be heavy-handed. But, and I can't really, well, I guess I can foresee a time where this would be done when you have someone who says, no, I'm not doing it, and you can't make me. Okay. Hopefully, nobody ever forces our hand like that, but it could happen, and the officer out there has to be able to, to be able to take some meaningful action. I got a couple of emails from people who were asking for exceptions so that their park structures could be open. And some of these people were in fairly affluent areas, and my comment to them was, if I was going to want to open up a park structure, I'd want to do it at Letterman Park where people were in apartments, you know? They had backyards and cul-de-sacs they can be in. And I was expecting, on Sunday, I was realistically expecting people just to take it over and say, well, we're not going to do it, and you can't make us. And I didn't know that Luke had done this because that morning, I sent him an email basically saying what we did right now. We need to have the ability to, at the very least, say, yes, you have to, and here's why. And cutting out this cumbersome process, we're not, we're being expedient, not for the sake of making it easy or trying to mess with people. We're doing expedient because we want to make sure that we get compliance that quickly. And we certainly don't want to criminalize behavior which will be legal, hopefully, within a month. I guess this is more council comments than anything else. Any, Jose, you have something?
And the experiences for the exigency that COVID-19 is giving us, the more people that are out there and not complying with the stay at home orders, the more transmission of this virus that's out there, and more people with the potential to die. So, you know, this is not something we take lightly. So it's not happening in a vacuum, you know? That's why, you know, it's less draconian than what the governor did. It's a civil citation. I think, I think Dave, well, our city attorney explained, the only issue I have up to a thousand dollars, but I think law enforcement needs a tool. It's actually less draconian than what was already available to them. They could have just sided them with the misdemeanor, although the sheriff right now is not accepting any misdemeanor. It would have been a citation. But eventually, it, they would have had to present themselves before the superior court and deal with their criminal action and have a criminal record for being at the park too long. Now it's just a civil thing, and they can negotiate with that administrative judge or something less if they're convinced that administrative judge that they deserve less. So it's not as draconian as people put it out to be. It's less. It is, it is less than what, than what was already available to law enforcement.
Lynn, did you have something?
I guess I just, I, I respect, you grew up in a different, you have different experiences, for sure. So I, I hear that. I think, I think, I just want to underline what Councilmember Floris said. This is an emergency. This is not, we're going to come back in ten days. Do you really want our officers making four visits to the same picnic shelter for, gee, are you sure? Be back next week for a hundred dollars? That, so we need to think about that. But this is, these are scary, dangerous times, and if it's something that our officers feel like they need a tool, as I said earlier, I'd much rather have this than a misdemeanor, which would be quicker, right? No burden on the city. Somebody else, we do the administrative hearing on this fine, but if it's a misdemeanor, that's your job, right? It goes to the district attorney. And I just think we need to be, this is not any of those things. This is an emergency. If you, if we spent five days working with some business owner, please don't do this. I won't do it. Are you sure you won't do it? Yep, I won't do it. Are you sure you won't do it? Got it. And then they do it. What are we going to do? Come back in ten days and go, are you kidding? So I just, I think, I'd like to make a motion that we approve these orders. If you want to amend it in the workshop, we can revisit it. But this action, like all the ones before us previously, you've already issued them, so we're just ratifying what you've issued. We can change them, but this, the ship has sailed. So I'd like to make a motion that we.
I think we need to go to public comments, though.
I'm going to make it anyway. You can go to public comments.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the orders as they're written. If you want to amend them in the workshop, then we could entertain that language. But I think we don't need to overthink this. It's a local control at its best. We'll take care of you locally, but if you want to get a misdemeanor and end up in, with the DA, I guess that's an option. But to me, that does not seem at all practical. And we cannot forget the culture of our PD. I think our PD might be insulted that we think they're going to randomly give you a thousand dollar fine. They are not going to do that. So I just, I, I'm, I made the motion. I'm good.
We have a motion, but I was, that's where I was going to go. We have a, just one public comment?
One public comment.
You know, Mr. Clerk, we, in the beginning of this, I said that they would be read into the record, so if you would read this comment, please.
Yes. Jeremy Pierce, I was appalled to learn last Friday that the city of Clovis decided to be joined at the hip with Fresno by issuing an order threatening one thousand dollar fines to residents who violate stay-at-home orders. This heavy-handed approach is being taken even after saying that the voluntary compliance was working because Clovis residents are such good neighbors. The most outrageous line of the order says that no notice or opportunity to correct was required before issuing a citation. Once this was reported to the media, the city officials engaged in hours of mush-mouthed damage control and press releases, press conferences. The current city of Clovis order reads like it was crafted by Miguel Arias of the Fresno City Council. My question is, what are you going to do about it?
Is that the only public comment? Jose, you, we're going to make a second?
Yes, I want to second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Bob, did you want to?
Lynn wanted me to comment. So, so I appreciated the comments that all of the council members made. I found them to be reassuring. And I think also have been helpful for city staff to make sure that it's clear that we don't want this to be heavy-handed. We want this to be actually a, an option that will provide an opportunity for our citizens to be treated like citizens opposed to criminals. Because our only option right now is for them to be treated like criminals. I do believe that the exigency, which has been described by the council members related to the COVID virus, has some sound reasoning behind it. To wait ten days to give a warning, like our normal administrative citation process works, that doesn't really make sense in this type of an environment. And I also am of the opinion that if the hearing officer, whoever that may be, should decide that this, in, from a relative scale, was not a significant violation, then there can be some mitigation of the fine during that process as opposed to the full one thousand dollars. So it's for those reasons that I, I believe that while I have been deeply concerned during our conversation, at least initially, though I wasn't concerned about this at the beginning of the meeting, I am going to be voting to support the motion.
Bob, go ahead. I, I like what you said, Jose and Lynn, with regards to, this takes it out of the misdemeanor court into a citation, but that is never presented. You know, and so that's why it makes it confusing because people just take a thousand as, oh, I'm being fined, I'm being sent to court for a thousand, I have to pay it. And so somehow, I don't know if it helps at all, but what we discussed today, I think, really enlightened me as to, we are having local control. We are being more lenient, if that is the term. And that's, and taking it out of making it a criminal action, but just a citation, it doesn't go on the record, that, I think, needs to, you know, that shows where we are different. And so that makes us different than what people are saying, that, you know, we're just like Fresno, but we're not. We are act, and when I hear that, then I'm very, very comfortable, okay? And so, because it's still, I mean, some of this is still true with the comment with regards to the wording of the order is different than what the wording of the mayor, the explaining. Yeah, but that's, that's our job. We're going to do the politics of explaining what we meant by it and the intent. But the wording, because of how you explained it, Dave and Luke, I'm very comfortable with it now. And it gives me. with it now, and it gives me better ways to explain it also to those who, you know, may question it to me, which shows the human side of Clovis, the more, you know, the more loving side of Clovis that I thought we kind of took away when this came out, so thank you for that.
Luke, would you keep us informed if there's any citations issued under this ordinance?
Absolutely.
Thank you. For order, not ordinance.
We, we have a motion and a second. Jose, do you have anything else?
I have one more comment. And as a very senior law enforcement officer in this county, when I was in the academy, they taught me one code, penal code. It's one of the first codes, Code Four. It's what grants officers discretion. Just because, in California, just because a law's written, a penal law is written, what Penal Code Four says is, you don't have to enforce it. What's more important is justice. So, if it doesn't further justice, don't enforce the law. It literally says that, that we as law enforcement officers don't have to enforce a law that we feel is unjust. So, I know our officers here in Clovis abide by that. They know they have the discretion to do the right thing, and I know they will do the right thing.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk?
For item number nine, we have a motion that-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
On a motion by, for agenda item number nine, on a motion by Councilwoman Ashbeck, executive by Councilwoman Flores, we have a 5-0 unanimous vote and support.
Before we move forward, I just, I want to read something into the record. There's, there are times, this is not always an easy job, and especially in the days of social media, where you're dealing with people who either hide behind names that don't exist or take their free shots on you, I'm going to read the, read a quote from a President of the United States. "The man in the arena, it is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes up short again and again, because there is no effort without error or shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, great devotion, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of great, of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." That was written by Theodore Roosevelt, not Elvis. Item number nine, excuse me, item 10, is a workshop for the Clovis City Council to conduct a workshop to discuss impact on ongoing city operations during the COVID-19 state of emergency as declared by the federal government, State of California, County of Fresno, and City of Clovis, and to explore actions taken, that the city may take in response to the crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those listening, this is Luke Serpa, City Manager. So, in, in the past week or so, we've kind of gotten the operations, at least our internal operations, under control. We're monitoring the situation both locally, statewide, nationally, as far as the, the rate of infection and deaths and hospitalizations. And while we're still very early in this, and we're not getting overly optimistic, we are starting to see some significant flattening of the curve in California. And now, more and more, we're starting, we're able to look forward to how we come out of this economically. This is a catastrophic event as far as the economy goes. Today, the governor had a press conference where he announced that Washington, Oregon, and California will be partnering to figure out a, a reopening strategy and how they're going to go about doing that. We are also looking at the same. Andy has been, Andy in the Economic Development Department's been, been working very hard, reaching out to our business community, talking to them, finding out what they need. Right now, you know, to put things in, in perspective, the gross domestic product of the businesses in Clovis on an annual basis is about $4 billion a year. Now, I've seen estimates that the GDP is going to drop by eight to 15% for the quarter. We do not have funds that we can make a huge direct impact on that GDP drop, but Andy is maximizing what we do have, is the ability to assist the businesses in tapping into the funds that are available that can make a very significant difference. The, the SBA has the Paycheck Protection Program, which offers loans that turn into grants, or can turn into grants, to small businesses, and Andy's working with our local businesses to connect them to that program. We also fund the Valley Small Business Development, or help fund the Valley Small Business Development Center, where it's run through Community College District, and they offer experts and counseling on how to fill out forms, how to, how to, how to gain access to these other funds. There's some other funds out there that we're directing people to, some FEMA loans and grants, and working, but at the same time, working on, okay, what are we going to do to jumpstart the reopening of some of these businesses? Because we have a lot of small businesses and large businesses in Clovis that have closed because of this. And so, right now, we're doing what we can to connect them to the sizable funds that are available, and we will be coming back sometime in the next couple of weeks with kind of a, a proposal. I think we're looking at the first meeting in May with a proposal for the use of some CBPG funds and some other funds on how we can make a, a direct impact on some of the Clovis businesses. So, it's, it's nice to see that really, at all levels of government, everybody is starting to, not that we have the COVID problem solved, but the curve has been flattened enough, at least, that we can look, that there is an end to this curve, and we can look at these types of programs to try to help the economy recover afterwards. So, we're continuing to work on that. Andy is in touch with, with numerous, numerous businesses every day. I think he has sent emails to all of the businesses in Clovis, several emails to all of them, kind of directing them. We have links on our website, you may have seen the most recent one, we started the Clovis Carers, Clovis Carers webpage, where we are working with the, I was careful, we didn't want to infringe upon that, but it's Clovis Carers. We, we are working with a, a third-party vendor where people can go online and purchase gift certificates, they're, they're all digital. I think they also offer physical gift certificates as well, but they can purchase them online, and many of the vendors are signed up to offer discounts. You can get $100 gift certificate for $80. That's a way to try to keep some cash flow going into these businesses right now while they're closed, to help buy them, buy them time and keep them viable until such time as they can reopen. So, we're doing a lot of stuff on that. We're going to come back with a, kind of a comprehensive plan, including some allocation of some funds at the beginning of May. And that's really all I had right now. Things are going relatively well. Again, we've, the, the only, the only citation that has been issued was a criminal citation before we had the authority to issue the administrative one, then it was for the price gouging. And that's just, that's the only one. And, and that, and again, that was after repeated warnings and warnings. So, I will keep council apprised if any administrative citations are issued, but I really, I, I don't think that's necessary. That's just something to have in the hip pocket. That's all I have, so.
Any questions for the city manager?
I don't have questions, just, just comment on basically the same lines that you were commenting. I, I think we should, if nothing else, get out of the way of business, because I think there's all kinds of pent-up demand there for, for, from the, from the buying public and from the business leaders, they want to do business, I think people want to get out of their homes. We just have to help our business community and then the patrons of them to, to facilitate that. So, just get out of their way, and when they need us to advocate for the next level of government, be it, be it county, state, or federal, that we be their best advocate so they can find strategies, because it's, it's not going to be business as usual, it won't be normal, we'll still have to do some of that social distancing, the enhanced hygiene, we might have to wear masks for a little longer, then there's going to be testing of, of the virus. Now, they're talking about anti, antibody testing, all kinds of things that we're going to have to be doing, so, so, and then contact tracing, now Apple and Google are coming together, I mean, that's going to be seen as draconian, as the government and the big brother, you know, watching over us, so, so people are going to see that as us doing it, and, and if people do it voluntarily, and it's Google, and it's, and it's Apple, and it's a way to, to monitor what's going on with this virus, and it's voluntary, and the big brother has nothing to, to do with it, maybe some people will comply with that kind of stuff, so we can know where this virus is and help us get out of, from underneath this, this scourge. So, there's going to be a lot of new things that we're going to have to do, at least as, until we find that this vaccine that we'll eventually have. Unfortunately for viruses, we have a poor record of finding vaccines, even for the flu, we really don't have a vaccine for the flu, since we have to take shots for the flu every year, so, so it's going to be a different world after we are out of our homes, so we should be facilitators. Oh, Councilwoman Boyle?
Thank you, yeah. The President of County Department of Public Health has more detailed statistics on where the cases are, and the, you know, the City of Clovis is mentioned in there. I would be curious to know whether we know, as a result of the data that's been collected by Fresno County, as to whether in the City of Clovis we're also starting to see a flattening of the curve. I did notice that the last three days, you know, after a day of having 25 new cases, the next day was six in Fresno County, the next day was three, the next day was six in Fresno County as far as new cases, and so that's a significant drop, and that is showing the flattening of, of the curve, just, you know, with three data points, but there've been occasions in the past in Fresno County where we've seen these types of drops, and then it picks back up. But do we have any longer-term data for the City of Clovis as to whether we're actually flattening the curve?
I don't, I don't think we have that readily available. We might be able to compile it. The other thing to keep in mind is that the, the cases that are reported for Clovis are for anybody that has a Clovis address. So, if you are a county, if anybody in 93611, 12, or 619 address zip code, so I know that our first responders have the addresses of known COVID residents that are isolating at home, but that's not shareable on a general basis, so I don't know, even know how many of the ones that are reported of being in Clovis are actually in the city. But we, we can look into that, and I can try to get some data on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want us to be really careful in our approach to it, as I've mentioned many times, I just think that the, we want to be as careful with our reopening as we were at least initially with knowing that this was coming. The, the other, the other issue that seems to be popping up, and I, and I think that we, you know, initially, we're saying, okay, all of these emergency declarations and orders are coming down, and everybody was like, yeah, we have to, we have to do something, we have to do something. And now I'm starting to recognize a pushback from elements within the legal community which are really starting to focus on the orders as to how narrowly tailored they are and how they are being applied, whether they're being applied evenly. So, I just want to kind of bring that to David's attention, that as we, as we move forward, I want to be, maybe do a, if necessary, kind of a, a reanalysis of what we've done so far, to make sure that it is narrowly tailored to actually address the issue of this COVID-19, and then finally, whether it's being equally applied, because there are some places where you can gather and have more than 10 people in a building. There are other places you can gather and not have more than 10 people in a building. And so, why is there that distinction? What is so essential about one function and not essential about another? Because that, I think, is going to be on the horizon as far as pushback, maybe not here in Clovis, but it may come to Clovis. I th, I already know it's coming to other parts of the country, and I want to make sure that we are able to make that distinction as necessary. Those would be my own comments. Thank you.
I had a conversation with a barber, and I just asked him, why don't you do it at home? And he said, state law prohibits me, the barbering code, or cosmetology code, I don't, I don't know what it is. And they have to have certain, there are requirements they have to have. So, I'm going to give, I'm going to get ahold of one of our assembly people tomorrow and find out if there's something that we can do for them in the event that maybe there's some provisions where they're masked and the person you're cutting is masked, and I, because they, those are the businesses, well, there's a lot of businesses that are suffering, but most of the, a lot of the people I have calling me are in that because, you know, their, a month is going to kill them. And, I mean, I, I stood out in the yard yesterday with my razor and just did my hair, because I can do that. I know. But, but people with beautiful hair like Bob just don't have that, that possibility. Now, in, in seriousness, my home state of New Jersey is getting hit very, very hard with COVID. There's a community in my county called Lakewood. Lakewood has 103,000, and it's the, it's the fastest-growing community in New Jersey. Lakewood is, has a very large Jewish community. In fact, it's got the largest population of Jewish American Jews outside of Israel. It is a very affluent, very, very tight-knit community, and as of Friday, they had 987 cases of COVID, 103,000. And it's because social, they, they resisted social distancing. And it, I'm hoping that all 100, that was as of Friday, I mean, who knows what it is today? And hopefully, and it's not a religious thing, it's a, there's a, there's a reason that we have to be separate, we're at least separate enough where we're not going to continue to infect each other. And it kind of goes to Bob's point of not going in, not coming out too fast, but, you know, and, and I, I, I listened to people who said, you know, I have the First Amendment right to gather, assemble religion, absolutely. And this is where it becomes difficult, because on one hand, you want to make sure that, I would, I would, Jose and I have put our lives on the line to protect people's constitutional rights, Bob, and Von, and Lynn too. I mean, we would step up to protect somebody's constitutional right to all of the freedoms that, that Americans have, but what good is, what good are those freedoms if tens of thousands of people die because we're not being careful? It's, it's a, it's a dilemma, and that's one of the reasons it's tough being in the arena, because you're never going to please everybody. And all we have to do is do the best we can for, for the largest amount of people in the flock. Luke, if masks starts to become required, is the city prepared to provide all our employees masks? And if we are, for how long? If not, so that way, you know, we can also kind of know, and what, you know, what, what have you heard?
Well, so I, if masks become required, they will probably be the fabric mask, not the surgical mask, not the N95 or even the KN95 mask. We already have acquired enough fabric masks for all of our employees to have at least one, and we have distributed them, and right now, they are optional. We, we have toyed with the idea of making them mandatory, but we're not there yet, but they all have them. And in some cases, they are mandatory where we have- And in some cases, they are mandatory where we have, I believe, the fire crews because they all ride in the same cab of the truck. It's mandatory. Some of the public utilities crews that are sharing trucks, it's mandatory. Outside of that, they're still optional, but we do already have the masks. We bought them from Snowflake Designs here in Clovis. They, they converted to making masks and, and they're the fabric ones, but they have the pouch to put in a filter in between. So we already have those.
And any thought on your end to be stricter, at least with our employees for the time being, or not until we hear something from the county or the state?
So far, I've been hesitant to make it mandatory across the board. For instance, you know, if we have a guy that's out riding a lawnmower all by himself or a garbage truck all by himself, it seems unnecessary for him to be wearing a mask. But we are looking at it and kind of studying our options on that. We may, if, if the county or state came down with such an order, we surely would go through and, and make it mandatory here at work and start enforcing it. But for now, it's still optional.
My last comment is just with regards to our meetings. I feel like when it's not face-to-face, you lose that accountability, I feel like. And I didn't know when we voted for those procedures that this was the result where no public can ever come in, yet we mark all these seats. I think that there's something to what we did at the senior center where the public can still come and face their council members, their elected leaders, and address things that aren't prepared three days and whatever the timeframe is in advance. And sometimes also, in the middle of a discussion, there are things that come up, and I'm sure those who are listening have things that come up, but I didn't think of it three hours before or however, now I can't comment. There's something lost with that. We, we have the luxury of, you know, you present something and I never saw it when I read it, but then I think of it and I can comment on it. And I think the public input on that is lost. And I, I would love to have the meetings open up again and social distanced, but I, I don't know why we went this way, you know? I thought we were adding electronic in addition to an open meeting until, you know, the doors were not opening automatically. And so I, I just wanted to pass that on to my colleagues to see if, you know, we, when we meet like this, it seems like we're scared, you know? Ah, no public come in, you know, don't, don't infect us. But we're not scared. You know, we were fine in, in the senior center. So I, I would like to open it up in addition to having the technology available both ways. So that way, we have that. I think that's healthy for government, so.
I think we probably need an explanation as to why we're not, because, because I think that Von's recollection is correct. We were planning on opening up our council chambers. We put the zeros on the chairs to show what social distancing would be like, and now we haven't opened up. So if we can give an explanation as to how come we're not opened up, I'd, I'd like to know, and I, I'm kind of with Von. I think we're, it's social distancing, I think we're fine. I mean, maybe there's the limitation of the, of the ten people in a room, maybe that shouldn't apply like it doesn't apply in a grocery store. So I guess we need an explanation.
I'll take a shot at it. And I put this together, having the seats out here, just to give council a visual on what could take place. My recommendation to not open it up was of a concern with crowd control and having the ability of having twenty people show up and managing somebody sitting in certain places in the room and our inability to control the crowd. If it's council's direction to go that route, of course we'll go that route. As far as the technology, we would have to do it in here. The senior center doesn't have the capability to do what we've got going on with carryover in the corner and that type of thing. We have amended the protocol quite a bit since we began this process, as we've learned a little bit more. The technology is pretty incredible and what we can do. Next Monday, I was going to come back with a revised protocol just to tell you what's in place. And I think that would be a good opportunity for you to consider directing us to open up or not open up. And one other piece of it was going to be that I did reach out to all the city clerks in the state of California about what's being done. And I don't, I couldn't find a single jurisdiction that still has their meetings open to the public at this point, just because of the concerns I raised.
Lynn?
I would just, people aren't supposed to go outside, so they can't come here, in my mind. When they, it's an emergency. This is not forever. It's an emergency. This is exactly how I understood it, that this would be what we would do when the stay-at-home order gets lifted, then people can come back and sit, sit six feet apart in the chairs that have an O or the opposite chairs or whatever the rules are. So I just think we need to be super careful. There are rules and orders in place. We just got through talking about the governor's order and stay-at-home. Stay-at-home is what it means. Now, we should all probably be at home. I should be at home, certainly at my advanced age. You're welcome. But I mean, I think that's, you're getting close, don't laugh. You should be there with me. But I think that, that the rules, we can't have it every, I am super frustrated about this conversation. I love all of you, but I am frustrated. We can't have it all the way we all want it all of the time. This is an emergency. These are the rules. We're going to try to live with them. It'll be gone soon and then we'll find a new way to operate. But I, I just think, I don't want people to come here because I want them to stay home. I want to protect them from me. I don't want to be protected from them. I'm not afraid. I just think we need to follow the rules. The rule says stay home, it means stay home. We are essential. We're doing the essential roles of government. That's enough. We'll have four meetings like this and then the orders will be lifted and it will all be okay again. But I just, I think we cannot parse these rules and we think it's fat and we think it's too much and we think they're wrong and we think it's in the zip code. It's just, this is the way it is. So sorry for my frustration. I love you all, but you are all frustrating me.
If I could add one more thing.
But I love you all.
I forgot to add was going to be that a lot of jurisdictions are just kicking everything down the road. They're not bringing anything to city council other than like these last two items. So that's another option to go, if you wanted to go that route and not consider anything that could be potentially controversial. And just that we have a lot going on over the next three months with regard to development due to the J one deadline that we're trying to accommodate supporting development.
I, I think this is where we segue into city manager comments, and I would have to assume that you have handled those in the workshop, but I want to give you the opportunity.
Yeah, just one more. It probably goes more with the workshop. The other thing we're planning on doing is because of the very unusual budgetary circumstances, generally, we present the budget to council the third meeting of May. My intention is the first meeting of May to kind of bring the draft budget for the general fund at least. Again, the general fund is our biggest concern because that's the one that's going to be impacted the most and with the least reserves. So I plan on bringing a, a draft budget to council the first week of May and getting direction and feedback before we carry on and develop that into the full budget. So that's just one other thing we'll be doing the first week of May.
Any, there were council comments. Councilmember Waylon? Councilmember Ashbeck? Councilmember Bonnet to it?
First Amendment has been on my mind a lot ever since this happened. And I've been back and forth because I worked in healthcare and I apologize because it may frustrate you, but those are things, okay, good. Because, you know, essential, we talk about it, is sort of, you know, when, when, especially when, if there are more items coming up, it's essential to me because it's going to affect my livelihood, yet they have no way to address it, especially if they're not technologically, you know, in tune. And so that, that's my biggest fear is that when government takes itself away from its people. And so, you know, it's, we can't prohibit the free exercise, okay, abridging the freedom of speech or the press or the right of people to peaceably to assemble and to petition us for redress, redress of grievances. And those last two are the ones where I, I've been battling the most this, this time in COVID. And I thought that what the mayor said and what Mayor Pro Tem said last week when Lynn made the comment, we all have our roles. And so we can't take one-hundred percent medical role. We can't take a hundred percent business role or whatever. And so we're sort of that one in the middle where we, we have to take it all. So that's why it's been difficult because you, you listen to everything and you go, we should do this, but look at all the lives that are affected here. What about those lives? What about these lives? And that's, that's the challenge and I think that's, that's what has put me on my knees the most these last month or so, for the wisdom to know what to say and how to decide. And I'm just glad there hasn't been major decisions put upon us other than, you know, the, the orders. And so, that's all I have.
Councilmember Flores?
I appreciate, I'm not quite the same light as you, Von, because my parents were the immigrants and, and, but they taught me a lot because they, they, they came here fleeing to a country that, that really didn't appreciate their value. And when they got here, they, they came to appreciate the value of the, of this country and, and its laws. And, and they taught me to study its laws. And yes, we have a great constitution and, and it wasn't right initially. And so they, they made, they made sure that, that it could be amended. I always remind Councilmember Waylon that even the constitution can be amended. And those first ten amendments were great amendments. And yes, we have the First Amendment, you know, we have the First Amendment. And yes, it guarantees us all kinds of rights. That one amendment guarantees us all kinds of rights. But even the First Amendment, even the First Amendment, one of, one of the great judicial scholars that I think has ever lived was Antonin Scalia. And he, he has written, or he wrote, because he's no longer with us, great, 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 when he had to opine on, on, on very important judicial cases involving the First Amendment, he, he would sometimes say, no, even the First Amendment has its limitations. You know, a pastor can't bring his flock into a, into a chapel and light it on fire. That's not, we can actually stop that. You know, the government can do that. We, the people, can do that. So, so, you know, in this case, this virus is a fire. And we can stop a pastor from lighting his church on fire. And so, because that fire doesn't stay in that chapel in this case. That fire continues after and affects everybody in that community. So I think we're a constitutional republic. And that means that the people of this city chose us five to, to represent them. And that's our system. It's been our system for over two-hundred years and it's a great system, best system in the world. And, and in hard times, I think it's when it, when it's the best. And we're in hard times, but we'll overcome. And we're the representatives. And, and it's great that you have those, those thoughts because we should honor the founding of this country and, and the words of our founders and respect them because they're very important. We shouldn't take them lightly. But they, even they instituted a way to amend the words they put down on paper. So as long as good men and women do the right thing for the right reasons to protect their people and, and our institutions, I think, I think we're doing the right thing. We're not being draconian. We're not. We're, we're, we're not being like Fresno. I don't, and I don't think Fresno's being that draconian. And so we're doing the right thing for the right reasons, trying to save as many lives as possible. And this too will pass.
The difference between like the city of Fresno's system of a strong mayor and our system where I'm the mayor is totally different. I, Friday, when all this came out and I'm reading about how people are earnestly saying, I can't go see my, my grandchildren because I'll get a ticket and all the concern and hysteria, I, I felt compelled to step out and make some statements on behalf of the entire council that I didn't have the authority to do. And I would, I'm never comfortable doing that just because it's not, I don't have the authority to speak on the, on behalf of the council without the council's permission. And obviously, we couldn't have a conversation because of the Brown Act. But I, I felt that it was important for the person who is the mayor, whether it would be me or someone else, to allay the fears of the citizens that they don't live in a totalitarian state where people are going to stop them and say, show me your papers. And we don't live in, that's not, that's not, well, there was a, one of, someone I've known for years, very pro, pro Clovis person, on his Facebook, he was talking about the situation. And I finally said to him, this is Clovis, we don't roll like that, you know that. And after he calmed down, he sent me a message about twenty minutes later and he said, I've removed my post. Because he realized that he was venting. And, and I totally get it. I understand why people were mad. Fortunately, I don't think we'll ever get stepped out to the point where we have other people sending our message without our input. And I, I don't think that error will happen again. But it, it put me in a position where I felt like I needed to step out. And thankfully, I, I didn't take very many shots. I mean, but, but that's okay too. We expect that occasionally people are going to, they're going to take a different position as they should, as we should as a council. If we're all in agreement all the time, there might be something wrong with our thought process. So anyway, that'll, I will, we're going to go into closed session. Are we reporting anything out?
There will not be anything to report out tonight.
Okay. We will go into closed session. Thank you very much, folks at home.